Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Cartel call of role.
Counselor Cooper out here. Counselor Taneiri Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Vega Maldonado.
Here.
Counselor Avellaneda.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Private.
Counselor Vido. Counselor De Jesus.
President.
And Counselor Judy Garcia. You have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our, next time on the agenda with memoriam and celebratory resolution. We have a resolution introduced by Counselor Vega Maldonado, Counselor De Jesus, Counselor T. Garcia, and all members of City Council regarding Women's History Month. It reads, whereas during National Women's History Month, the Chelsea City Council recognizes the contributions made and the important presence of women in Chelsea and to the United States as a whole and celebrates their service and many roles that women play in our society. The following women have made great contributions in our community and have reaffirmed through their perseverance and dedication a mission above uplifting and empowering other women. And whereas Officer Barbosa is a true role model in our community, a woman of color and uniform that exercises compassion, care, and love for our Chelsea families, all while enforcing the law and ensuring safety in our community. She drives her work as an officer with deep understanding of our community needs, trauma, and barriers. We are fortunate to have her serve as a Chelsea Police Officer. And whereas Rosie Medina is the first Latina Police Officer in the city of Chelsea and the first woman in the Chelsea Police Department. During her time at CPD, Chelsea leads, Rosebel leads the domestic and holds a master's degree in criminal justice. She has served our community for more than 25 years. Whereas Sharon Caulfield is a member of the Chelsea Black community. She's a key member who was actively engaged with the organization as well as the COVID-19 Vaccination Initiative and developed the Chelsea Black Communities Workforce Development Initiative. She is known as the dean because she simplifies herself as the custodian of our organization as well as our community. Whereas Joan Cromwell is a leader and mother and nurse, a board member and a social justice warrior. While having many roles, Joan simplifies what it means to empower others while fighting for social justice and healthy equity. Many times she will be behind the scenes, she ellipses those around her. She is a real leader and she's beautiful. Whereas Almi Albeta is an excellent educator and member of the Chelsea Rotary Club and serves not only our students but our entire community with great compassion and leadership. Her outstanding performance during the last two years has made her one of the most important leaders in Chelsea. Whereas Gladys Vega is a pillar in the Chelsea community. She's empathetic leadership and compassion for all have made her an icon in our community. She's also an amazing mother, grandmother, heffa, friend, and overall beautiful human being. Whereas Tanaydi Camacho Garcia is a student who is an upcoming entrepreneur. With her family's support, she started a business at the age of 10. She is a lupus warrior and empowers those who are going through the same experience as her. She's an amazing sister and dancer and is an example of our youth in Chelsea. Whereas Cheryl Watson Fisher is Chelsea's first ever black lawyer in the city of Chelsea. She has served our community for over 20 years as a city solicitor. Cheryl is an example of what it means to empower women, be a woman of, what it means to be a woman of excellence and intelligence. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Chelsea City Council hereby expresses gratitude to all Women's History Month trailblazers and continue their amazing work and community. What is wish the council?
Mr. President, I'd like to adopt under suspension and I'd like to speak on the resolution.
Counselor De Jesus asks that we adopt under suspension. Seeing none, you have the floor.
Buenas tardes a todos. Tonight I have the honor of recognizing an empowering leader of our community, a mother, a mentor, and as many consider her an ally to the social justice movement, our very own Chelsea Police Officer Barbosa. Ms. Barbosa is a first-generation American. Her family roots are in the beautiful country of Cabo Verde. She moved to Chelsea in 2013 and just three years later became an officer in our community. Today, she is one of just a few females we have on the force but is constantly mentoring and supporting the recruitment of more female officers through her leadership in the Chelsea Youth Police Academy. Ms. Barbosa, I thank you for ensuring safety in our community. I have always been transparent with my community about the needs of some of my very own loved ones. I can relate and understand the pain of those who have families suffering from mental health issues, substance abuse, and trauma. There is no denying that our city is hurting more than ever with hiking rates of these cases. And I thank you, Ms. Barbosa, from the bottom of my heart for working tirelessly to support those you see in the streets of Chelsea. Those individuals that at times find themselves lost, you reprimand their actions as an officer in our city, but at the same time seek support and services they need to have a second chance in life. Tonight, I hand you this certificate. As an empowering woman in our community, you are a role model for other cities and we are lucky to have you here in Chelsea. And just real quickly, I want to point out that in this audience tonight, we have an individual you often saw in the streets. Tonight, this individual joins us to celebrate you, Officer Barbosa. She stands here with her head high, eternally grateful for your presence in her recovery, for your compassion, for never treating her as a monster or judging her, but instead treating her as a human being and advising her and guiding her. Officer Barbosa, thank you for being part of my sister's recovery. Because of officers like you, today she is alive. There are so many more individuals in our community who I know will make it thanks to officers such as yourself and leaders in our community. Gracias.
Counselor Leah Robinson?
No, no comments, sorry.
Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to congratulate all the contestants and all the honorees tonight. Especially want to say, thank everyone for making the resolution valuable for these beautiful women as we sit up and recognize our women in our community, the mothers, the sisters, the aunts, the teachers, the mentors. But I just want to say a few words on Officer Barbosa. I met her prior to her coming to Chelsea. She's the same as she was doing a really gentle job in the state building. She never tried to get in front of herself and take credit for everything that was being done. I've watched her on the streets, help folks, walk with kids. You're just a credit to our community. People look up to you, not just because of your color, but because of your dignity and your respect and your honor and your due that. You're due to that respect and honor. There has been some great leaders here, and we're going to be celebrating one more that was a pioneer. But you have taken that mantle and you have carried it well and we are so proud of you in this community. Congratulations tonight. Thank you.
Any comments? So, I wanted just to say a few words prior to one of the individuals who I nominated, and that is Detective Rosebel Medina. And I didn't get to say a lot during the paragraph on her nomination. But she came to Chelsea as a young woman, working a part-time job. And a lot of people don't know that, but one of her first jobs coming to Chelsea was actually working at Tito's Bakery. And like many young women in the city of Chelsea, started off there. And it's been a joy over those 40 years to see those young women start off there and then go on to bigger and better things. And Rosie's definitely one of those people who did that, who went back to school and attained her high school diploma while being a full-time mom. And went to graduating from Bunker Hill Community College to getting a degree. And was going to be going to law school, but ended up joining the Chelsea Police Department. And that's why we were lucky enough to have her. She's been there now for over 29 years and she leads a domestic violence unit, holds a master's degree in criminal justice. And she's worked particularly in working with families on dealing with family violence and in communities like Chelsea, that is just an important role to play. So again, I wanted to thank you and it's great to witness all of this. So congratulations on your recognition.
Counselor Cooper.
I'd like to thank all the women that are nominated. Without yous, women, yous make the world great. And I'd like to thank also the woman I nominated, Ms. Watson, for being who she is and for all the years of being here in our city. She is a great attorney, she is a great human being, and she is a great person. There ain't much you can say about her. She's a highly intelligent woman. This world is made up of highly intelligent women. Even the one that people don't think is intelligent is very intelligent. All women are great. So I would like to thank yous all for being, how you say? The greatest thing there is on earth is yous. Without yous, there wouldn't be none of us.
Counselor Melinda Vega.
Hola. Muchisima gracias por estar aquí con nosotros hoy. Thank you for being here with us today. I want to say I am honored to be here in front of all these beautiful faces. And how beautiful is Chelsea that as I look through this resolution, I know each and everyone that we nominated, whether some for many, many years of my life, personal and now turns into professional, and some just professional that I look up to as well. And that's a beautiful thing. And obviously, I am extremely honored to be here in nominating my mother, Clarice Vega. So, give me a moment. I prepared a little speech because I'm not as good as she is back, you know, behind the mic, you know? So, gracias, Calvin. It's a privilege to be here honoring Clarice Vega, Executive Director of La Colaborativa, and who I have the privilege of calling mommy with this award. Anyone who knows my mother knows that she is simply a force of nature. A long-life community organizer, she has been getting into good trouble throughout her entire career, making her way up the ranks at La Colaborativa from receptionist to the position she has today, the gaseke. As a woman of color, an immigrant, a single mother of two, Gladys doesn't just seek to serve her community. She's embedded as a proud member of it. She lives and breathes it. I must say, as you can imagine, in my lifetime, I have had many opportunities to be proud of my mother for all her attributes and achievements in her career. But none like these past two years. My mother stepped up and risked her life and her loved ones to make sure her community was fed and safe during the pandemic as Chelsea's became a national hotspot for COVID-19. There is no doubt in my mind, the work she has done at La Colaborativa has changed and saved countless of lives. If we have learned anything from her, and there's certainly a lot to learn, is to love their neighbor and fight like Gladys Vega. What the media saw was a mother feeding, was my mother feeding thousands of people, jumping behind a truck, negotiating with East Boston Neighborhood Health Center to create the biggest vaccination center in Chelsea, or fighting with legislators to get more resources for Chelsea. What my kids, my brother, my husband and I saw was a woman that worked 14 hours, 14-hour days, a woman that would pick up every call from strangers asking for help, a woman that went to sleep crying due to the suffering in her community and still was able to give hugs and kisses the next morning. You are my hero, mommy. I love you and it's unorgullo ser tu hija. It's an honor being your daughter. Te amo. I love you.
Counselor Tanaydi Vega.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm going to keep it short and simple. I'm so happy to be here surrounded by so many powerful women. And I'm glad to see so many family members of mine and friends. Tonight, I honor my daughter, Tanaydi Camacho. I'm going to say it in Spanish first, just because I think in Spanish first. Tanaydi Anaís Camacho, eres mi razón de ser y mi mayor tesoro. Desde que naciste, has sido luchadora. Tu perseverancia de nunca darte por vencida, a pesar de tus desafíos, me enorgullece todos los días. Gracias por enseñarme un amor puro y completo. Hoy no tan solo celebro tus logros y todos tus acontecimientos. También celebro tus fracasos porque ahí veo lo grandiosa que eres. Veo tu madurez y tus habilidades de mejorar cualquier situación. Te amo con todo mi ser, eres mi obsesión y mi razón de luchar contra cualquier obstáculo. Hoy siempre te celebro, hija mía. Tengo fe que tu futuro es brillante y sé que no te rendirás nunca. Que Dios te bendiga y que te guíe a tomar las decisiones correctas. So now I'll say it in Spanish. In English, I'm sorry. You are my reason for being and my greatest accomplishment. Your perseverance to never give up despite your challenges make me so proud of you. Thank you for teaching me what pure love is. Today, I not only celebrate all your achievements, I also celebrate your failures because there I see how great you are. I see your maturity and your abilities to improve any situation. I love you with all my might. You are my obsession and my reason to fight against any obstacle. Today and always, I celebrate you, my daughter. I have faith that you have a bright future ahead of you and that you will not give up. God bless you and may he guide you to make the right decisions. Love you.
Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to get lost here because I was going to stand up and thank Rosie, then Cheryl, then Gladys, and then Ms. Garcia, the chairperson. And I supposed to be introducing Joan. So I'm definitely going to get lost here. But first and foremost, I just want to say I'm honored to be here as a city councilor this evening, this day, to partake in this here. Again, just a few words with Officer Medina. I remember you when you first started in the work and you did a lot of dirty work. You did a lot of dirty work that make a really improvement and impact in our community. Not only did you do a lot of rest, but you also helped those folks that needed help while you were out there. You gave them some guidance and some, those that didn't understand the language that was predominantly, you spoke their language and you helped them, whether they were out there, you know, walking the streets or addicted to something. You brought not only yourself as a police officer, but you brought resources to get them help and get those women off the street and even men. So I want to thank you for that. Cheryl, I want to thank you for always just giving us the solid advice and staying out of the political ring of all 11 of us. At certain times, it was, you know, more than you can handle, but you handled it very well. Want to thank you for your integrity, your understanding of the law, your righteousness with each and every city council member, whether we were former and came back, speaking of myself, and also where we were serving right with you. Gladys, everything's been said about you, I just can't say it. You know, everything shows in you. You put your life out there. I've been out there and I've been wiping my brow and I see you grab and I'm like, oh my God, I look bad out here when you're out there. But I just want to thank you for all those that you've helped. You know, it started years ago when we first started running together. My first campaign, you were helping Roy and Roy got elected that year. Now I understand how he got elected that year. My very first campaign, 1991, Roy got elected, me and Roy was running for an open seat and he had Gladys Vega. And I'm like, who is she? Who is she? And you never wavered.
Ninety-seven, by the way.
You never wavered away from our city. We've seen you in other things, you know, first the Latino Committee, then Central Latino, the education, the parents, the working with the children. Just thank you, thank you, thank you. Who's after you? The chairman of the school committee, I see you out there, you're a growing star, celebrity in our community. Just want to thank Ms. Garcia for her work and not only her work in our schools with our, you know, students and the care and as a graduate from Chelsea High, but also in our community. She is so influential. She got her sister up here, so I want to thank you for that also, you know, for your work. And, you know, when folks see good things, they want to do good things. And I'm sure you told her, it's not all grand up here. And, but still, she came and, you know, your mother is here tonight. I remember when I was a counselor at large, I used to always make sure I got a Christmas card to 135 Washington Ave. I didn't, I honestly did not know everyone there. I didn't hardly, I'll be honest, I didn't know anyone there, but I knew everyone there was voting. Always make sure, I wanted to make sure. And over the years, I got to meet you folks and I'm so honored to meet you. And Joan, you have just been, you know, the last five years, you just have turned the city upside down, not only with the work that you do, but your family that's supporting you and behind you and just, you know, being the head of the CBC and, you know, just always coming up with ideas and working and working with individuals, where you're from, you know, the school committee, the city council, the city at large. You did a lot with our COVID. You were out there, you were out the senior center, making sure that people were getting hey, making sure that folks were getting tested. And on a personal note, I've always said, and this is just one because I got a wife, but I've always said behind my mother cooking and soul food, you were number two. So if you don't know her, she's a very good cook. You know, she does, she does some dynamite dinners and all of her dinners, they go out and they support where as he calls. So I just want to thank each and every one of you that already has been mentioned and you're more than honored to be here today and we need to do more of this. And you know what? You bring a lot of integrity, a lot of beauty, a lot of honesty, and also a lot of love and care. Sometimes it's guys, we wrestle without, but you ladies, you bring the beauty, you bring the integrity, you bring the honesty, and you bring the care. And our family and our community need that. So thank you all. Oh, 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 I forgot. Yeah, I told you I was going to do a lot. I forgot, I forgot. Yeah, and it's my honor also on behalf of my colleague, it's not here today, Damali. She wanted me to give you this certificate of recognition to award you this given this day to Women's History Month 2020, to Joan Cromwell, signed by our president, Roy Avellaneda, and Damali Vito. So I want to make sure you get this afterward. Thank you.
Counselor Todd Taylor.
How great is this that we can be here to celebrate all these great women? Congratulations to all the recipients, really. There's not a name on here that I disagree with. I'm here to nominate our superintendent, Almi Albeta. So, I got to know Almi, you know, initially as a superintendent, but then she joined the Chelsea Rotary Club and I got to know her real well. And I'll tell you, I couldn't be more impressed and I couldn't be more happy that we have such a woman in charge of the children here in Chelsea. I think, I think that she is top-notch in her field and we are very, very lucky to have her here in Chelsea. She is an amazing woman, an amazing educator, and she's moving up the food chain in Chelsea Rotary, so she'll make an amazing president someday. Thank you very much for everything that you do, Almi.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all the women being honored here today. You make this community a better community. I have the pleasure to speak about Dean Caulfield. Dean Caulfield is not only involved in the Chelsea Black community, I'd be amiss not to mention that she is an actual dean of education at Bunker Hill Community College where she retired. But her job actually was introducing women into science and technology. And she oversaw the workforce development program. Had the opportunity to work on a couple of projects with her around Lewis Latimer Society. But I just wanted to make sure that people know that Dean Caulfield was an actual dean at Bunker Hill Community College. And congratulations.
Counselor Brown?
I'm not going to get lost this time. Superintendent, I want to congratulate you again. Thank Todd for nominating you. Again, I know what type of person you are because this past summer when we had our first engagement back out in our community, it was not a school activity, but it was a community activity. And you were out there with Todd and myself and my wife and we were all dancing in the street. And that's the type of person that we really appreciate, not only because it wasn't a school night, but it was, you wanted to be a part of the community and from day one, you have been a part of the community and you have just fitted in and everyone is so happy that you're here. And Dean, Dean, Dean Caulfield, our great friend, have been here for many years. I've met her here with my good friend Jesse Thompson and way back, you know, and Mary Fifield, and they all spoke very highly of you. And to this day, we're still speaking higher of you and the work that you continue to do, not because you retired, because you have the love and you have the mentorship that many of our community need. So I want to thank you for your community engagement. Want to thank you for the work that you do, not only with the CBC, but you're always out taking pictures and during the Black History Month, you're always making sure that we have some type of film that we're probably not aware of that made a significant part of our history. You bring it to it. So without you ladies in our community, we will be missing a part. We will be missing a part of the history, the... We will be missing a part of the history, the knowledge, the love, the understanding that you bring to our community. And one of my colleagues said it earlier, it's because of you ladies here, this community over the last ten, fifteen years has became a better community. So thank you for making our community better. Thank you.
So at this time, I'm going to ask if the awardees will please stand up to receive first an applause, and then shortly after that, please come to the dais so we can take a picture with the council. We'll now take a brief recess so we can get some photo of all the recipients with We're back in session. The next item on the agenda is a resolution introduced by Councillor Vido and Councillor Lopez regarding honoring Monica Fernandez Castro. Whereas Monica Fernandez Castro will be retiring on March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, from the Department of Children and Families as a director of Harbor, the Harbor area, and where Monica worked for the Department of Children and Family for over sixteen years as the area director, and where Monica Fernandez Castro, originally from Columbia, has her master's degree in social works, as well as a Juris Doctor in Law. And where Monica Fernandez Castro is an advocate of immigrant rights and working with diverse and under-resourced populations, particularly in the Chelsea community and the surrounding areas, and where she is a proponent of engaging fathers in child welfare practice, as well as working with the whole family system, as evidence by her advocacy and support to family nurturing programs at the Harbor office. Monica Fernandez Castro, faculty member at UMass Boston, prior to working with the Department of Children and Families, and appreciates the teaching and the continuous learning aspects of social work. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Chelsea City Council hereby expresses its gratitude to Monica Fernandez Castro for her service as the area director for the Massachusetts Department of Children and Family, and continued success for all her endeavors and continued health, prosperity, and happiness in her retirement. Introduced by Councillor Ennio Lopez and Councillor Damali Vito. Councillor Lopez.
I would like to adopt it under suspension. If there's no objection, I would like to speak.
Seeing no objection, this is adopted under suspension. You have the floor.
Thank you. The city council would like to recognize for her dedication and those sixteen years of working with our immigrant community and all our Latino communities in Chelsea and all groups. We want to say thank you for all your years working in the city of Chelsea, and also to say to thank you for everything, and good luck in your retirement. Thank you.
Seeing no further comments, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. We have a public hearing. There will be a public hearing regarding the authorization of a linkage fee in Chelsea. A copy of the homeroom petition can be found at Chelsea City Council Office, five hundred Broadway and Suite three oh six, Chelsea, Mass, or by emailing fmalera@chelseamadotgov for electronic copy. Anyone wishing to speak on the public hearing on the homeroom petition, please rise to this microphone, state your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom Ambrosino, city manager. I'm in support of the homeroom petition to have the legislature authorize the city of Chelsea to create a linkage fee and to create an ordinance to implement such a fee. I think linkage fees are a legitimate way for cities and towns to require large developers of commercial and residential properties to contribute to the community. And there are several communities around us that have legislative authority to require linkage fees as part of developments, and I think it's time that the city of Chelsea have that same authority. All this will do is grant the city the authority to implement a linkage fee, and that's what I'm asking you to approve tonight.
Seeing no other speakers, that portion of the public hearing will now close. We'll now open up the public hearing on regarding the establishing a program for allowing any occupant or condominium unit, a single-family, two-family, three-family home, or four-family home, to receive a reduction in the water and sewer bill for the entire premises equal to twenty percent of the entire bill. A copy of the homeroom petition can be found at Chelsea City Hall Council Office, five hundred Broadway, room three oh six, Chelsea, Mass, or email fmalera@chelseamadotgov for electronic copy. If anyone's here that would like to speak. Seeing no speakers, I will continue the hearing. That item will be continued for future public hearings, and there's more, I'm sure there's going to be meetings and a introduction on the bill at some other point. We'll now move on to our regularly scheduled public speaking portion. Is there anyone who would like to address the city council on the public speaking portion regarding any matter before the council? Please state your name and address.
I am Sharon Caulfield of twenty-six Breakwater Cove, Chelsea, Mass. I would just like to thank the council for all of the great work that you have done for this city. Chelsea is really a role model, if you didn't know it. There's no other city in the U.S. where people are able to speak like this, participate like this, and come together as you have led. Starting with our city manager, we couldn't ask for a better city manager, as far as I'm concerned. He gets involved with everything that we do, and all of the rest of you, I see you around town, I see you over the vaccination clinic, I see you at Market Basket, or wherever, you're always there. But just to thank you again for everything that you did for Black History Month, letting people know that blacks have been an important part of Chelsea for many, many, many years and many centuries, including Lewis Latimer. And did you know that Lewis Latimer's father was an escaped slave? And I found that out by working with the Robinsons. Lewis Latimer's father was promoted by and defended by Frederick Douglass. So you can believe that kind of history existed here for Chelsea. You're a great city. I'm glad that we moved here in nineteen eighty-eight, and glad to be a part of your city. So thank you so very much.
Love you.
So my name is Joan Cromwell. I live at thirty-eight Addison Street, and I'm just going to piggyback off of Dean and just say thank you, thank you, thank you, for just being a part of Black History Month. It was on Zoom, it was challenging, but we did it. It was successful, it was inclusive, and I appreciate you. I appreciate each and every one of you, and I thank you for walking the walk with us and talking the talk, and just wanted to say I appreciate you as a council. And Dean is so right, because nowhere in the state of Massachusetts, I feel that every voice matters. And if you stand up and say something, you're heard, and that's what I appreciate. I just want to also say thank you for recognizing me for Women's History Month. I don't always like to be recognized, because there's so much, many more, and so much better women going on there that deserve the accolades, but I do accept it, and I appreciate that. I do want to say that I'm here standing on the shoulders of many women, past and present, young and old, who have prevailed as mothers, daughters, wives, and leaders, both well-known as well as the Aung Sanh heroines amongst us. I stand here to honor and in appreciation for our stay-at-home queens who invest tirelessly in building rock foundations for family upbringing, and to our queens who are at the forefront of serving community organizations, as well as leading in industries. I thank you, I appreciate you, all of you, juggling many, often too many balls at once, but doing so stoically, gracefully, and humbly. Tucking away your tiredness, placing your mental, physical, and personal wants aside for the betterment of others. Women are givers. We give life by birth, but we also by nurturing humanity. I stand here to honor my mother, who raised ten children, and all women who spend their lives uplifting their children, to be better, raising them with a fear and strong conscience. I salute our women who take risk in stepping out of their comfort zone, ensure support systems, to explore greater opportunities and encouragement to expose their children to different types of education, extracurricular activities, and resources to thrive as others do, as opposed to settling for the natural disadvantages that comes with growing up in inner-city or within lower socioeconomic neighborhoods. I want to acknowledge and praise our women that have transitioned or passed on, both recent and long ago, for their impact in the legacy they have left as mothers, daughters, friends, and advocates. So many, many cherished women who are and have been the wind beneath my wings. Thank you for this honor. Thank you.
Seeing no further attendees who are wishing to speak, we'll now close that portion of the meeting. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of our March seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Councillor Brown.
This is a motion to accept and follow minutes under suspension, Mr. President.
Councillor Brown asks that we adopt under suspension the minutes of the last meeting. Seeing no objection, that is moved. We now have a communication from the city manager, Tom Ambrosino.
We have a notice of residency waiver. Dear councillors pursuant to the Administrative Code, Section one twelve point oh two, I am ready to notify you of my intention to hire Ms. Hillary Domeno, ten ninety-six North Shore Road Apartments, Revere, Massachusetts, for the position of senior planner, project manager in the Department of Housing and Community Development, and to grant her a waiver for the residency requirement set forth in the Administrative Code, Part four, Section one twelve point oh- 112.01. A copy of Ms. Domeno's resume is attached. There were no timely applicants from Chelsea residents for this position. In accordance with Section 112.02, I request that you provide me with any comments on the proposed waiver within seven days.
Counsel Robinson?
If there are no objections.
We have a communication received from the City Manager regarding the free cash requests. Dear Counselors, I am writing to notify you that the Massachusetts Department of Revenue has certified a free cash for the City of Chelsea at the close of fiscal 2021 as follows. The general fund, $14,886,858. Sewer Enterprise Fund, $2,887,38. The Water Enterprise Fund, $1,585,800, and the INI Mitigation Fund, $287,399. These reserves reflect the city's positive financial condition. Given these surpluses, I am writing to now seek reinvestment in a portion of these funds into the programs, projects, and efforts that will continue to benefit our residents. I'm also looking to cover some deficits from FY22 that have already surfaced. Does the council want me to read the whole list, or should I send this also to the Committee on Finance? So we were going to accept this and send this to a second reading and send a copy to the, send this to a copy, attach them to the orders, and also send this to the Committee on Finance if prior to the next meeting, if he wants, Counsel Brown wants to have a meeting to discuss with the City Manager these expenditures and allow counselors to have questions. We have a communication from the City Manager requesting a fund to school department construction at 77 Washington Avenue. Dear Counselors, I am writing to request City Council approve four financial transfers to allow for the school department to complete some major rehabilitation work at 77 Webster Ave. The school department has leased this property, 77 Webster Ave, to serve as an administrative space to free up space in the school buildings for student instruction. These new, this new location would be the future of home for the special, to the Special Education Department, the Chelsea Virtual Learning Academy, and the district's curriculum coordinators who work with all schools. In addition, the district's homeless students and data coordinators will be located in this space, as will the ELL tester who assess students who are new to the district. Together, approximately 35 staff will be located in this new space. The requested capital funding will be used to construct a purpose-built space for these staff members. The lease can be extended up to 25 years, so improvements will immortalize over the long period of use. The school department already has all the funds necessary to complete this work, this capital work. There are no new appropriations necessary. The funding is available in other school department capital project accounts that were either, one, fully completed and have surplus funds available; two, were paid by the school department from an alternative funding source during the pandemic shutdown. The projects that have surplus funds available are the FY19 CIP Early and Learning Center Playground Projects of $145,346,050, and the FY18 CIP Veterans Turf Resplacement of $190,204,91. The projects with money available because they were funded from other sources, the FY21 CIP MCB Roof Envelope Repair Project of $526,114, and the FY19 CIP Williams School Boiler Replacement Project of $150,000. The total amount of available transfer is $1,016,665,41. I respectfully request that City Council approve the transfers from the four projects above to allow for the school department to complete necessary renovations at 77 Webster Avenue. Draft orders are attached. Counsel Robinson?
Accept and file a communication. Will be some coming up on the new business?
We have a communication received from the City Manager regarding a gift to the library from the Amateur Telescope Makers of Boston.
Dear Counselors, the Chelsea Public Library has received a donation of a telescope from the Amateur Telescope Makers of Boston. The telescope has a value of $400. In accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44 and 53A, I am requesting that the City Council formally approve the acceptance of this gift. Draft order is attached.
There'll be some coming up on the new business.
We now have, we're moving on to Section 8, Communications and Petitions to the City Council. Communication from the DEI officer, rather, Candace Perez, regarding the progress report. Dear City Hall community, the Department of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion in the City of Chelsea launched a major effort in the fall of 2021 to promote ongoing diversity, equity, and inclusion at City Hall. The quantitative data obtained through one-on-one interviews and focus groups resulted in a diversity, equity, and inclusion strategic plan that today has been organized in six areas of focus. Creating a welcoming environment, hiring and retaining diverse senior leadership and staff, recruit and retaining a diverse workforce with a path for succession planning, implement and establish employee diversity, equity, and anti-bias trainings, incentivizing initiating a socially responsible supply diversity program, partner with Chelsea Public Schools of Office of Equity, Diversity, and Excellence to foster representation and leadership and career opportunities across all disciplines. In collaborating with thought partners and civic leaders, opportunities for growth and possible developments have emerged. The Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion invites you to follow our progress as we continue to build the foundations to become the department we aspire to be. Is there a motion?
Accept and file a communication under suspension. If there are no objections.
Seeing no objection, that communication has been accepted and filed. We have a communication from the Park and Clerk, Jeanette Citron White, regarding approved items for the Traffic and Parking Commission meeting on March 1. Dear ladies and gentlemen, according to Section 63B of the Chelsea City Charter, the following actions were approved in the March 1 Traffic and Parking Commission meeting. Seven, to post a handicap sign at 139 Chestnut Street. Two, the number eight, to post a handicap sign at 5 Sturgis based on the application. Do I have a motion?
Accept and file a communication under suspension. If there are no objections.
Seeing none, that communication has been accepted under suspension. We now have unfinished business. We have a home rule petition introduced by Counsel Avellaneda regarding the act authorizing the creation of linkage fees for development in the City of Chelsea and authorize the following: That the City of Chelsea may, by ordinance, require a payment of linkage fees from the developer of any commercial industrial project, any mixed-use project with a commercial or industrial component, and any residential project that creates 24 or more residential units, provided that the linkage fees for the such project are dedicated to the Community Impact Linkage Fee Fund as described in Section 2 below two, I'm sorry, Section 2 below. Two, the City of Chelsea may establish a separate fund known, to be known as the Community Impact Linkage Fee Fund, which shall be kept separate and apart from all other monies of the City of Chelsea by the treasurer and into which shall be deposited linkage fees received by the city pursuant to Section 1. These funds in this community linkage impact fee may be expended by the city upon recommendation from the City Manager and a majority vote of the City Council, but solely for creation and maintenance of affordable housing, the support of social services within the city, workforce development, job creation and education, youth recreation activities, and provided they appear in the annual five-year capital improvement plan approved by the City Council, public space enhancements, traffic and transportation improvements, and capital construction projects. A copy of the home rule petition can be found at Chelsea City Council Office, 500 Broadway, 306, or an email by fmalera@chelseam.gov. What is wish of the council?
I'd ask for a roll call vote, but I'd also like to offer an amendment. I'd like to eliminate the number 24 from this, so we would have an opportunity when we come back to figure out what that real true number actually will be. I mean, I'm in favor of linkage. I just have some concerns about the number 24. So I would ask to amend it, to eliminate it, so that we can have some discussion when it comes back. Because if we don't eliminate it, we're going to be locked into 24 units.
So a motion by Counsel Robinson to amend the home rule petition to eliminate the number 24 so that it remains just as residential units.
In section one?
That would be section.
Section one.
So just say any residential project. Well, you say any residential project. So we just, and.
And say, any residential.
Any comments on that? Counsel Brown?
Which we've spoken early, under the, provided in its annual five-year capital improvement, we just need to correct that. F-I-V-E to five. Do you have F-I-V-E-R?
Page two, it says fiber.
You want to offer another amendment?
I meant to.
No, just correction.
I don't think we need an amendment, just the typo to fix it.
No, just for clerical. I didn't ask for, it's clerical.
All right. Now, what does he want to correct?
Just the.
Should be five.
Okay.
So I'd like to have that section one read, so make sure it sounds correct. If you could read what it, how will it read? So it would say, as corrected? So the City of Chelsea may, by ordinance, require the payment of linkage fees from a, from the developer of any commercial or industrial project, any mixed-use with a commercial or industrial component, and any residential project. Comma. Provided that the linkage fees for such project are dedicated to the Community Impact Fee Fund. Does that make sense?
Okay, so you're eliminating, that creates 24 or more residential units.
That's correct.
Okay. So that would be the amendment before you.
Yes. On the amendment.
I agree with that. Again, I think the number should be something that we all sit down and talk about. That number is before us, and as I stated earlier from the previous meeting, that if we don't, it was brought to our attention that we're locked in. So I want to thank Counsel Robinson for bringing that up, because this is something that whether I, you know, council members decide that we want 18, or 23, or 24, or 12, we have that option when we get into the negotiation and also into the discussion. If we go forward as is, we don't have that. So that's something I would support. Thank you.
Counsel Taylor.
I also, in principle, support this home rule petition. I think it is a good way to kind of regulate what happens here and to get some mitigation for the projects that are built in the city. I will be supporting the amendment. I think we can basically decide at a later time how the ordinance will be read. In this way, we are not locked in. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay.
Roll call is amended.
Roll call is amended.
Any more discussion?
No more discussion, just call the roll.
Okay, if you vote yes, you're agreeing to adopt this as amended. Okay, Counsel Rick Cooperrow?
Yes.
Counsel Teneri Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Avellaneda?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Abdo absent. Counsel DeJesus?
Yes.
And Counsel Jody Garcia absent. Nine in favor, none opposed, two absent. The motion is carried.
And that will go to our state delegation. We now have new business. We have a request introduced by Counsel Avellaneda. Unfinished business? Okay, yes, we have a, well, it's actually, should have been unfinished business. It was determined second reading, but it should be unfinished. We have the ordinance amended, amendment introduced by Counsel Avellaneda regarding adopting a new article in Chapter 12 of, Chapter 12 titled linkage fees for development.
Have to lay it on the table until such time the things come back from the state in regards to the home rule petition. If there are no objections.
Nope. Seeing no objection, this is laid on the table. This will be the actual ordinance once we get the approval from the state legislature to adopt, and this will be the body of which will be done, and we can start working on that as far as the numbers and rates at the time it is appropriate. So now we move on to new business. Counselor Avellaneda introduces a sub, a motion, rather, a subcommittee on conference to be scheduled to discuss the expansion of the Everett Avenue High Density Overlay District. Counselor Leo Robinson?
Adopt it, should ask me under suspension and set up a subcommittee on conference.
For those of you who are not familiar, the City Manager asked the City Council to have a meeting prior to a May deadline to discuss the state requirement of communities to have a higher density zone within their community. This would, meeting would at least obligate, make, fulfill the city's requirement of at least meeting to discuss it, and will possibly have something done within the next calendar year.
Next one introduced by Counsel McCuperrow and Counsel Lopez. Request that the Traffic and Parking Commission look into accepting all licenses regardless of origin of vehicles registered in the City of Chelsea for residential parking tickets.
I would like, at the end of it, where it says register in the City of Chelsea, to be able to get a parking, a residential sticker.
What do you want amended?
I'm sorry.
That the residential sticker be put to it, because this thing does not say.
So you want request that the Traffic and Parking Commission looking to accepting all licenses?
Yes.
You mean driver licenses?
Yes.
So we've got to say all driver licenses?
Regardless of origin, for vehicle registered in the City of Chelsea to get a residential sticker.
Regardless of origin for vehicles registered in the City of Chelsea to attain
A residential sticker.
A residential parking sticker.
Yes, and I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor.
It's kind of unfair that people that register their cars here and live here cannot get a residential sticker because they can't produce a license that says they can drive here. But state law doesn't require you to have a license to register a car. State law says that you can register a car without a license. Somebody else has to drive it, but here we have people that come from other countries. Now, they can use their license to drive. It's accepted. So when they go downstairs to get a residential sticker, they not be able to get a sticker because they can't produce a Massachusetts state license. And I think that's discriminating against these poor people that are paying excise tax here. Their cars are registered here, everything, but they're not able to park their cars because they cannot produce a license. We, they really don't need a license to get that because state law says you can register a car. I know I just said that, but I want to make sure that they understand that state law says you can register a car without a license. So I can't understand why they're not allowed to get it. I believe that they should be allowed to get a sticker. If they pay the excise tax here, and they live here, and they can produce, if they have to a license from a foreign country, which is accepted in the United States, in this state anyways, so they should be entitled to it. And if they don't, that's discriminating against anybody that wants to get it, and they should be entitled to it.
Counsel Lopez?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the reason that we put on this is, like my.
Yeah, the reason that we put on this is, like my colleague just said, anybody who present a license from wherever they're coming from, they can register a car in Massachusetts. I didn't know that, but, you know, it's reality. And a lot of people in Chelsea, they don't have license, a state Massachusetts license, but they got their car registered in Massachusetts. They are paying excise taxes here, but when they come to the city hall in Chelsea to ask for a parking, parking residential sticker, they kind of get into trouble, because they say, "No, we need your license." But they, now, they can get a parking sticker. They have to present a bill with their name, maybe it's the cell phone number, I mean, the cell phone bill, or utility bill, and they can get a parking residential sticker. And the reason that we put on this is because I get few calls from people who are, their cars are registered in Chelsea, they're paying excise taxes, and, and they do everything, and the only thing they can get is a residential parking sticker. If they're allowed to get a registration, we should be able to give them a parking sticker. Thank you.
Counsel Brown, I'll, I'll, I'll have some comments on this, as I'll put on my former registry hat and explain.
So, I'm not sure what the councilors are talking about regarding what's required to get a residential sticker. I'm not sure if it's just a license. I'd like to see this go to a subcommittee. We can actually have the parking department, we can have the clerk come up and have some understanding what's required, and why that folks that have a license is not being offered parking. I thought that if you had a lease, you had a home, you had a residential address, I just don't, I would not be supporting it as it is. I'll be open to have a discussion, to also have some evidence being produced on what exactly we are trying to change. But again, it's unfair if we vote this in up tonight without giving the parking department an opportunity to come before us. Thank you.
Again, just so, I want you to understand that the only thing that they're asking is the parking clerk to look into it. It doesn't mean that the parking clerk nor the parking commission will change the regulations in the parking program. But if someone would like to request a meeting on this, feel more than, that's fine. I will explain what I know of what Counselor, Counselor Anjo Lopez and Counselor Recupero may be referring to. It is true, you do not need a Massachusetts license to register a car. You do not need a license to register a vehicle. There are people, for example, who are handicapped, do not have a driver's license, but own a vehicle, they register them, and they have someone else drive them. Now, what we have seen in local communities, particularly in communities that have a high immigrant population, you will see individuals registering their vehicles either under someone else's name, or they create a commercial or a shell to both register the car, purchase the car, and insure the car. But it is not registered in their name in many of these cases. What I think may be happening is that the clerk is looking at a vehicle that is registered under a different name or company, and the person asking for the residential sticker is not that person, or it's a company, and therefore cannot be given that. So even if you say that a non-Massachusetts license should be an acceptable form of identification, the hiccup that these individuals may end up facing, and again, this is my thought of probably what's the hookup, is that even if I present you a license, whether it be from Connecticut, or whether it be from out of the country, that is, has reciprocity in this country, you still don't have that vehicle registered under the same name. And if you don't, you don't get the same, because you cannot prove that the person who has the driver's license, whether it be from here or not, and brings a telephone bill and a utility bill from that address, does not mean that that's all the same name on the registration. So unless all three are the same, license, registration, utility bill, unless you, until you get the trifecta, you don't get a residential sticker. And I think that's where the hiccup is. You're right, you can register a car, and a lot of people who do not have a driver's license here, register their car and get insurance by putting in the name of company or another individual and so forth, be able to have access to a vehicle legally and so forth, but that does not mean that it goes back forward. So I fully explain, you know, I'm welcome to have this all explained in a subcommittee meeting, or have a letter sent and explained back, but that's what we'll end up. Counsel Lopez?
To the chair, I would like to ask the city manager if he can explain something about this. I think I talked to you about this, and I think Jeanette explained us. Is that okay with the chair?
Yeah, so, thank you, Mr. President. I'm always reluctant to try to articulate the rules downstairs for that parking office. I'd really prefer to have Jeanette up here. But as far as I know, you need three forms of identification. Some picture ID with your Chelsea address on it. It doesn't matter where it comes from, it, it's a picture ID with a Chelsea address or some sort of identification. You need a registration with that same exact Chelsea address, and you need some sort of utility bill or bank statement with that same exact Chelsea address. If you provide all three of those, then you are entitled to get a residential sticker and the visitor parking stickers. I don't know that, I don't know that it makes a, you know, I really don't know what she ex, I know you need that registration, and I know you need that utility bill or bank statement. I don't know what that third form is. Typically, it's some license or some picture ID. I don't, I don't know, it matters where it's from, as long as it references that same Chelsea, that same exact Chelsea address that's on your registration and is on your utility bill, then you have the three pieces that she requires. But I think it would really be up to the city clerk to come up and explain what she accepts for that third piece of identification. I just don't know what it is. Most people that come up have some sort of license that has a Chelsea address on it.
Counsel Recupero.
I would like to ask the city manager through the chair a question. So, in other words, what happens is, I got a residential sticker. You go downstairs, you show me a registration, and you show them a license to make sure that that's who you are, and they give you a residential sticker. True, that, I got it, you go downstairs, you show them your registration and your license.
And a utility bill.
Huh?
And your utility bill.
Well, a utility bill, whatever it is, but, so if you have, if you register your car here, and you do not have a license, but it's you, so in other, what I'm asking for, if you don't have a license, and you have an ID stating that's who you are, and your car is registered there, you should be entitled to it, even though you don't have a license.
You would get one. You don't need to have a driver's license.
So anybody that goes downstairs, and the car's registered to them, and they can prove that that car's registered to them, right, without having to show a license, just to prove that it's registered to them, they should be able to get one.
Yes, as long as you provide those two other pieces of proof that it's you and you live in Chelsea. You don't have to produce any kind, you don't have to prove that you have a license to drive here or anywhere else. That is not a requirement. I know that for a fact, that is not a requirement. You just have to have three pieces of identification. I just don't know, I know one is the registration, one is the utility bill, bank statement. I don't know what the third is. A lot of times, the third one is indeed a driver's license, but it's not required to be.
Okay, so that's what I'm trying, me and Counsel Lopez is trying to do, is that, you, if you don't have a driver's license, and you go downstairs, you should be able to get one.
As long-
If you have a picture ID, you have some type-
As long as the car-
Is registered to you.
Registered to you.
Right.
And not another name, and not some insur, not a business, because they just wanted, so, we'll get there, okay.
But this, 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 what this says, the car's registered to you.
Right.
I would suggest you, just a suggestion, send it to committee, have Jeanette come up, and she can explain this in real detail with absolute accuracy to you.
We'll get there. It's only, it's a request, so we'll have a meeting. So we have another order now asking, it's, we're gonna, well, first, first we'll get a response, and then after the response, we'll talk about getting a meeting. So let's wait for the communication to come back from Jeanette.
Who's requesting it?
You have Counsel Recupero and Counsel Lopez asking for this to go to the parking clerk. The clerk will reply, and then after hearing the reply, we'll discuss whether or not we go to a meeting.
Do you want to make a, to the chairman, give the motion for an amendment, so you may want to get the language, I'm not sure if you got the language.
We got it, yep. We got it.
Request to the parking clerk?
Yep. Clerk, yep, correct.
As amended.
Request introduced by Counsel Recupero, that Traffic and Parking Commission look into putting a "No parking from here to corner" sign on the left hand of Essex Street and Highland Street. Counsel Recupero.
I'd like to make an amendment to that too, if it's possible, there's something-
And what would your amendment be ma, made to?
To put a mirror on the opposite side, so when people come down the bottom of Essex Street, they can see the cars that are coming down on Highland, because the street is so narrow, and you can't see the cars as they come down. So you put a mirror across the way, so the people can see what's coming down when they're taking a left-hand turn. Because you cannot take a left-hand turn, right, the way it is now, because you, you could take it, but you put in your life, in your, a risk, because you can't turn, and you can't see what's coming down, because Highland is a two-way street.
Okay. That motion passes under suspension. Next order, we have an order introduced by the city, that the city manager provide a list to the city council regarding all grants, and to be, that will be awarded to the city to hire employees, and provide an explanation as to what, once those grants expire for, for said employees. Counsel Recupero.
I'd like to adopt this under suspension, and I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor, sir.
I think I've asked before how this is, how it was done, but what I want to know is, what happens when the grants, I know before, when the grants expire, we absorb these positions. So any position that's put in a grant, it's really a job, because it never goes away. That's what I want the people to understand, and to the chair, if the city manager can come up and, no? Okay.
You ask for a response, I think that he'll provide you a response, and that'll answer the questions.
I understand, but the whole point is, that I'm trying to get at, anytime they say, "These are temporary and they're grants," they're not really temporary, because we absorb those grants and those recompositions. That's what I want to know, is there, if, a grant says five years, and then expires, does that job go away, or does that jobs get absorbed, and we keep it, and the taxpayer pick up the difference? That's, I asked that question before, many times, and I really never got a clear answer on what it is. But I can understand what it is. From my experience, what I believe is, they get these grants, the grants come, and then they get a position. Once the grants expire, the city picks them up. I can understand the grants, they go to cops and they go to firefighters, but any grant that goes to any other thing, should we absorb them all? Any, anything that comes up to us, I can see, I can understand, public safety, but any other grant that comes up, that a position is created, after the, should be specifically put when they apply for that position and say, "Well, this position is not a full-time position, it could expire." But it doesn't. The only thing I see through the years is that whatever-
One minute.
Position, huh?
One minute.
Okay, plenty of time. From what I see is, whenever you get this grant, it never goes away. Any position that's done to the grant is kept. I want to make sure that the people understand, when they say, "It's a grant, and you don't have to pay for it," that you pay for it all the time, unless it specifically says that there's no guarantee, once this grant expires, this job could be gone with it. That's what I want the people to understand. And like you say, transparency, well, let them know what it is, instead of just saying, "Oh, well, it's only a grant, and you don't pay for it." You do pay for it, and I want the people to understand that you do pay for it. And I want an explanation, actually, how it operates.
The motion carries. We'll move on to the next order, introduced by Counsel T. Garcia, Counsel Robinson regarding the city manager to provide a list to the council for all properties owned by DeMula Supermarkets Incorporated. Counsel Robinson?
Yeah, I'd like to add to that, in the city of Chelsea, we're going to adopt it unanimously under suspension, if there's no objections.
Seeing none, the motion carries to be passed under suspension and amended as to include only properties in Chelsea. We have the next order introduced by a subcommittee, order that the Subcommittee on Conference to discuss with the city manager possibility of creating a commission for women's advancements, introduced by Counsel Nora Elise De Jesus, Counsel Melinda Vega Maldonado, Counsel Teneri Garcia, and Counsel Judith Garcia. What is the wish of the council? Counsel Melinda Vega Maldonado asked that we adopt under suspension. Anyone want to speak? Next order is a order introduced by myself, Counsel Avizaneda, home rule petition introduced by Counsel Avizaneda regarding notwithstanding the maximum like number of licenses authorized to be granted under section seventeen of chapter one thirty-eight of the general laws, licensing authority to the city of Chelsea may grant new five additional full license for alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises under section twelve of subchapter one thirty-eight, provided only to the establishing, establishments that meet the city's definition of hotels, restaurants, function halls, and in the case of function halls only, seating capacity is more than one hundred persons. A license granted under this section shall not be transferable to any other person, corporation or organization, and shall be deemed a Chelsea license. A transfer in violation of subsection A or B shall render the license null and void. If a license granted under this section is canceled, revoked, or no longer in the use at the location of the original issuance, it shall be returned physically with all legal rights and privileges pertaining thereto the local licenses authority, which may grant the license to a new applicant. What is the wish of the council?
A roll call vote on the adoption. If there were no objections?
There's no objection seems, so, question. We will need to go to a public hearing. So the introduction just is moved to a second reading and a public hearing.
Public hearings.
Just for an explanation quickly, the city received as part of the new census, five additional licenses. We're looking into, or in consultation with the city solicitor and the licensing board, reserving five that cannot be bought, but rather are part of a, the ones that will go back to the city, and when you would require a application in order to obtain one of these licenses. But we will get into it during a public hearing and a subcommittee meeting prior to the hearing itself, so we can talk a little bit more about it.
I have all the financial orders.
We have all the financial orders from, I, from twenty-two, F. twenty-five to F. twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six.
Twenty-five orders.
Thirty-seven, twenty-five in orders. Do we have a motion to take twenty-five orders to a second reading as a group?
If it's okay, I'll make a motion that we bundle all these together and go to a second reading on them. If any of my colleagues have, have not had a chance to look at these financial orders, please look at them. If you'd like to have a hearing, we can put a financial hearing together, but you have to let me know within a few days, okay?
So you want a subcommittee?
Subcommittee, yeah.
Group twenty-five was sent to a subcommittee on, I'm sorry, a subcommittee and also sent to a second reading.
Yes.
All right, that takes us through the financial- All right, that takes us through the financial orders. We have, is this one? I thought that was different, the CIP? Is that additional?
If it's private, that's money.
Okay. All the back ones, yeah. So I have an order introduced by Council Brown regarding the gift of the telescope to the Chelsea Public Library from the organization Amateur Telescope Makers of Boston. Council Brown?
Make motion, we have a roll call vote on it tonight?
Yes, we can. This is to accept the gift of a telescope to the Chelsea Public Library, a roll call.
Can you just state the amount, so?
There is no amount, it's just a gift of a telescope.
We have a value of the amount, that was the only concern I had.
Four hundred dollars, I'm sorry, it wasn't stated in there, so the value of a four hundred dollars was the telescope.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Five hundred dollar value, okay. Yes, what would be to accept the gift? Council Recupero?
Yes.
Council Tenida Garcia?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Taylor?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Council Abadina?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Vido absent, Council Jesus?
Yes.
And Council Garcia absent. Nine in favor and nine opposed, two absent, motion adopted.
We'll now move on to announcements. I have an announcement from the Katharina Palencia, the library director, their counsel. The Chelsea City Council, I'm sorry, the Children Department at the library acknowledges the week of young children, young child celebration between April second and to the eighth, with partnering organizations Raising a Reader Massachusetts. The director, Christine Ward, and the program manager of Raising a Reader would like to announce that if anyone would like to participate, they may attend this during the April second, April eighth week. Are there any other announcements? Council Recupero, then Council Taylor.
I'd like to make a public announcement thanking Eastern Mineral for the salt they gave to the people of our city, and thank you again for allowing the residents to go and get salt. Thank you.
Council Taylor?
So I'd just, just like to make a preliminary announcement that the Chelsea Rotary Club will be having an event to benefit Ukrainian refugees. We are planning on having a Chelsea telethon to, with local celebrities and politicians and all kinds of people to come on, some of the kids from Chelsea High and so on. More, more details will be upcoming, but look forward to having a telethon, much as there was, I think, about ten or twelve years ago after the Haiti earthquake to benefit Haiti. Thank you.
Council Robinson?
Hurricane Cortina, we did a telethon at the senior center, and I believe we raised well over twenty-five thousand dollars for that effort.
Any other announcements? At this time of last, if there's anyone, has anyone to name during, for a moment of silence? Council Jesus and then Council Brown?
It is a great sadness that I share, we have lost a beloved community member, Claudio Mojica. A longtime Chelsea resident, born February twenty-eighth, nineteen forty-one, has passed away on March seventeenth. Claudio, you will be missed, and I pray for the Mojica family in these difficult times as they say goodbye to such a beautiful soul. I personally remember you driving down Broadway in your red convertible playing your old-school Puerto Rican salsa. Claudio, may you rest in heavenly peace. I ask my colleagues to join me in a moment of silence.
Council Brown?
I also want to have a moment of silence for the four Marines that passed away this weekend in the helicopter. One of the Marines was from LeMister, Massachusetts, that was Captain Ross Reynolds, twenty-seven years old, Marine, lost his life in the hands of duty.
Anyone else? Nope. Please stand for a moment of silence.